Thank you for coming to the school committee meeting tonight. Let's all join in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it looks like I'm not... It was a little rocky, but everybody got in sync there halfway through, so that was good. All right. I don't know why all...everybody's here tonight. All right, Dr. Maestas, you want to get us started with the visual arts?
Yes. Welcome, everybody. Tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize our students from across Plymouth for their work that they have engaged in in our classrooms, and we're very honored to have them here tonight. We're honored to have you, parents and grandparents and guardians here to witness them get embarrassed a little bit in front of the camera, but we are truly honored to have our students here tonight to recognize their work that has been displayed at my office on South Middle Road, which I know many of you have ventured out to the far end of Plymouth to come and visit and walk through Central to actually walk through and see their artwork. So, we're very, very honored to have you here tonight. So, tonight what we'll do is I'll get up, Ms. Badger will help me. We will honor your children with their certificate, and tonight's school committee meeting is being recorded, so it will also be on the Internet. And if you go to our educational television website under School Committee, you can actually send a link to all your relatives all over the country so they can watch your children getting an award tonight. So, with that said, I will come around and we will begin our presentation. Test, test. All right, so we're going to start with Federal Furnace Elementary and Nicole Raitel. Debbie Mento. Excuse me, Darby Mento. Cold Spring Elementary School, Maggie Kussman. Indian Brook Elementary, Isabel Langoy. Nathaniel Morton, William Novak. Caitlin Nelsonia. When I was signing all of these, I was looking at some of the names and I'm thinking, I'm going to have a little difficulty with some of these names. Adam Capozzi, Plymouth Community Intermediate School. Cameron Cox, Plymouth South Middle School. Josh Hamel, Plymouth South Middle. Elliot Pelzer, Plymouth South High. Plymouth North High, Brock Mento. And Plymouth North High School, Cameron McCormick. Plymouth Community Intermediate School, Sophie Burgendahl. Aislinn Kelleher. Federal Furnace Elementary.
Now, we have the Got Grit.
Yes. So, just want to spend a moment talking about our next presentation, and I'm glad that you haven't all left yet. One of the things that I did this year to start the school year was we came up with the theme, and the theme was Got Grit. And grit is really the basis. It's talking about resilience and how do we build resilience in kids. So, this year, we start the school year with that theme. Everyone in the district, our staff, received a Got Grit t-shirt, which really talks about really sending a message to kids about what it means to, when you fall, you get back up. When things are difficult, you try. Just because you don't win the first time, you keep trying. So, that's one of the things that we've been trying to do across the district. Tonight, I'm going to feature some students who have been recognized for accomplishments in the district that have really demonstrated grit. And I know there are a lot of students here tonight that are going to be receiving a t-shirt. So, one of the things that we did in thinking about how we would celebrate some of these students that have been recognized by their teachers, we actually made a t-shirt for students. We're going to be issuing them out from here out until the end of the year, but the t-shirts look like this. So, it's Got Grit, I do, and on the back, it has a definition of what grit is. So, hopefully, they can wear this proudly so people can really understand that they have gone above and beyond and done something that is not the ordinary, and that's what we really want our kids to do. We know life is difficult. Those of us that have had challenges in life, you know that when you try harder and you stick to it, good things can happen, and that's what we really want our kids to do. So, tonight, I'm going to call up some students. We're going to actually give them a t-shirt afterwards. We have to size them up. So, Kristen, right here to my left, is going to meet kids out afterwards, and you'll get a nice t-shirt, and hopefully, you'll wear it proudly. So, I want to read off some names. They can come down if they're here. Come down to the front. I'll shake their hand, and then afterwards, they can meet Kristen out, and we can get a t-shirt for them, okay? So, the first student is from Cold Spring Elementary in Grade Four, and that's Gabriel Pedlicow. Gabriel? Is there anything special that happened at your school that people recognize you for being strong and determined?
I don't know yet.
Was it something that somebody recognized you for? Yeah, in the building? For working hard and learning a language very quickly? Wow. Now, was it difficult for you to learn English?
No.
No? That's good. I like that. Good job. Congratulations. Afterwards, we got a t-shirt for you, okay? Nice meeting you. All right. Congratulations. All right, so, see Kristen right there? She has a t-shirt for you. All right. Congratulations. Next, from Plymouth North High School, Caleb Montilio. And I know Caleb, I saw him come in. I'll tell you, I walk into North High School all the time, and every time I see Caleb, he gives me a big high five or gives me a hug. He says, "What a great kid," and he's been so resilient in his time here in Plymouth. He's at Plymouth Voice High School. So, Caleb, good job, but congratulations. Those of you that are Dallas Cowboy fans, that's probably how Jerry Jones...not Jerry Jones, the Cowboys coach back in the day when he was there. That's how he felt. Plymouth North High School, Wilfred Arujo. Congratulations. Nice to meet you. Is there anything that you want to tell anybody about the Y you're here tonight?
Well, I really don't know, but I really liked the program. So, then, that was first, and then, like, over the summer, when I did the Y, well, Camp Clark, I literally loved the kids, so I kind of like caught a passion for continuing this program, so I still want to continue.
So, what Wilfred is talking about is during the summer, he was involved in a leadership program that was connected with the YMCA and the Plymouth schools, and he was involved with becoming a mentor to students at camp. And he was recognized, along with some of the other students here tonight, they were recognized because they have the ability to become a leader, and somebody in their school tapped him on the shoulder and said, "You know what? You would be a great leader. Why don't you come and be part of this program? Why don't you apply to the program?" You got into the program, you worked all summer long at the Y, being a mentor to little kids, and you came out at the end really liking it, right? Well, congratulations. I appreciate all your work, okay? Plymouth North High School, Ariana Bachman. Hi, Ariana. How are you? Congratulations. Now, Ariana is another one of the students that was in this leadership program, and one of the things that a lot of students said the night that they had the awards is they didn't realize that people saw them in leadership capacities, and it's wonderful to see people like Ariana and a lot of the other students here today taking on the challenge of becoming a mentor to kids and coming out really enjoying their time and maybe finding a passion in life. So, congratulations, and Ariana, we have a t-shirt for you right there. And we have Ariana Bertino Payne. Ariana here? How are you? Congratulations. And do you know anything special that you have done that would be...you'd be recognized for night...tonight?
Well, over 45 days.
I'm sure that your family probably knows that you've been doing a great job in the schools. Is that accurate? Yeah. Well, I want to thank you for coming out tonight, and we have a t-shirt for you, okay? Plymouth North High School, Colin Brown. Come on down, Colin. Brendan Pedral. Brendan, is Brendan here tonight? Moving on, Marcus Coletti, Plymouth North. Hey, Marcus.
Hey.
How are you doing? You were in the leadership program this summer, too? Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have a t-shirt for you, and keep it up, okay? All right. Good job. Jason Lagerblade, Plymouth North High School. Congratulations. You're going to work at the Y this summer?
All right.
Keep it up, all right? Good job. Good job, Evan. Evan's another one of our students that worked in the summer at the Y. Congratulations. Keep it up, okay? We've got to clap. Jesus Velazquez Dabla. Is Jesus here? Okay, moving on. Plymouth North High School senior, Max Tripp. Now, Max wasn't...didn't work at the Y this summer, but Max, you've had an exemplary record at North, really working with yourself, and we're really proud of you. Just keep it up, okay?
Thank you.
All right, bud. Take care. We've got a t-shirt for you. Allison Barnaby, Plymouth South High School. Allison, you worked at the Y this summer, too, right? Congratulations, and keep it up, okay? We have a t-shirt for you right there. Did the Y program this summer, and how'd you like the Y program?
I loved it. It was a real way to get into my community and get, like, to know all the younger kids in my community, so it was really fun.
Did you like working with the little ones?
Yeah, they were really cute.
Excellent. Thank you. Have a good summer, okay? This next summer, okay? All right. Cassandra Salvatore, Plymouth South. Congratulations. Did you work at the Y this summer, too? Good. Keep it up, all right? All right. Take care. She shows determination just coming up here. Congratulations. Are you going to work at the Y this summer as well?
Yes.
That's great. Now, you really enjoyed your time there?
Yes. I enjoyed the kids. They were a bundle full, but they were fun.
Did you see any students that reminded you of yourself when you were smaller?
A lot.
All right. Have a great rest of the school year, all right? Shane McAbney, Plymouth South. Good to see you. How you doing? Things going well?
Yeah.
Awesome. Keep it up, okay?
Thank you.
We got a t-shirt for you right there. All right. Plymouth South High School, Kobe Roseme.
He's not here.
Okay, thank you. South High School, Sidney Taylor. Sidney, congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have something for you. We have a t-shirt for you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. And last, but not least, Kea Young. Congratulations.
I'm so excited.
Kea. All right. Have a good summer. I think you're going to work at the Y. We'll see you. So, that's it for our presentations tonight. I want to thank everyone for coming. Thank you all, parents, for bringing your kids tonight and enjoying a moment with the school committee. It was a pleasure for us to celebrate their accomplishments, and I truly hope that your children are enjoying their time in the Plymouth Public Schools, and we hope to see you again. Thank you, and have a great night.
We'll just wait a minute or two for the room to clear. So many, like, names from...consistent names.
So many names, like, consistent families.
I know. We see the...we see the...
Thank you. Thank you.
Courtesy.
Yeah, me, too. And I'm not going to worry about it. I'm okay with it. I emailed Kathleen.
Jimmy Johnson. Jimmy Johnson.
Funny, nobody ever wants to stay for the rest of the meeting. Why is that?
Watch it at home, on the couch.
Want to watch it at home? Yes.
That's good. Chillio.
They made room for you, Rich.
Rich, I'm glad he's still there.
Okay, so, for the audience that's left, is anybody from the community like to address the school committee?
Definitely Donald Trump.
And seeing nobody, we'll move on to our student representative from North. Max, you want to give us an update?
Hello. The Plymouth North High School's academic program orientation will be held Thursday, February 2nd at 6:30 PM. During the open house, parents and current eighth grade students that will attend North in the fall will be given a tour of the building, receive an academic overview from the department heads, be introduced to the freshman academy, and learn about clubs and sports offered. The local scholarship application for seniors is due February 1st. Late applications will not be accepted. Students can talk to their guidance counselors about this and find out information on Naviance. All are encouraged to apply. Midterm exams began on Wednesday, January 11th, and ended on Thursday, January 19th, and the semester came to a close on Friday, January 20th, and report cards will be distributed this Friday, January 27th. 108 Plymouth North marketing students competed at the DECA District 1 competition in Quincy, Massachusetts on January 5th and 6th. Role plays and subject matter tests were part of the competition, and 32 students placed in the top eight in their event, earning the right to continue to compete at the DECA State Conference in Boston in March. Congratulations, winners. Just a reminder that students succeeding five unexcused absences in a term lose credit. All documentation for absences is due when a student returns to school and no later than five days after a student's return. Attendance appeals for the first semester will be heard on Wednesday, January 25th. Please call Mrs. Valet in the main office to schedule an appointment. The sale of caps and gowns will begin on February 1st and run through February 17th. Orders can be placed before or after school in Miss Allen's Room 331. The cost is $25. Check or money order made only payable to PNHS SAF. Students will depart from Plymouth North High School and travel to Boston on Thursday, January 26th through Sunday, January 29th, to be a part of the Harvard Model UN Competition Conference. Through role playing and simulation, students will represent major government organizations, including the North Atlantic Treaty Organization, the World Court, and the Organizations of American States. National Poetry Out Loud competition is coming to Plymouth North. There was an open call Tuesday, January 10th, and Thursday, January 12th. The school-wide competition will be held on the evening of January 31st. Recently, the National Honor Society held their annual Bowl-a-thon fundraiser. Last week and this week, students went to bowl to raise money to help feed the homeless and fund student scholarships. Over 140 National Honor Society students have participated. Plymouth North had 13 students that auditioned for the Massachusetts All-State Musical Festival. Four of our students were accepted into the festival. Congratulations to the following students. Chorus, Roth Ad...Roth Ross Atherton. Chorus Roth Ad- Roth Ross Atherton, Chris Ferrante, and Michael Lucio, and for band, Chris Nolan.
Very good. Now for South, Dr. Sorenson wants to...
Yes, through the chair to Dr. Maestis. I'm one of those practitioners in the community who sometimes has to write an absentee excuse letter. And the five days of constriction that parents will call us with a great deal of consternation that, oh my god, I have to have this in five days?
Yes.
Just make a note that on the practitioners in the community, that becomes really difficult sometimes.
And I will tell you, Dr. Sorenson, that I have received correspondence from one of the organizations that manages healthcare in Plymouth and they have expressed the same concerns, so we will discuss that.
You see, we do listen.
Sometimes. And Megan for South.
Hello. On January 10th, there was a successful Skills USA mixer with both Plymouth North and Plymouth South High School. On January 12th, Eth Capella came and performed for our ninth and tenth graders during K Block. Report cards come out this Friday, January 27th, and we began a new term today. We just had students return from a successful DC inauguration trip. On January 25th, we have the Tech Expo with PCIS and PSMS students. January 25th is also the eighth grade orientation night at South. We also, pertaining to the new school, have a student transition group that help with adapting to the new school. Like, for example, some of the students like in the group are recommending having a school map on a Google document so they can have it on their phones to make it easier next year than have paper. And our school's a cappella group, South Avenue, is performing at NE Voices this Friday in Wilmington. And that's all.
Very good, thank you. Now we have old business. Last meeting, we went through quite a few. Does anybody have any updates for old business? I think we caught up on everything. New business? Anybody like to bring up anything new tonight? Okay. Superintendent report.
Yes, I have a number of things to report on tonight. Just a reminder, tomorrow night, we are, we have an appointment with the Selectmen to review our options for the turf, fields, and lighting at Plymouth South High School. So the meeting begins at seven. I think the agenda probably has us on about 7:15 or so. They're gonna do some business before our agenda item, but that is scheduled for tomorrow night. The Plymouth Education Foundation Gala, if you are planning on attending, can you please let me know? I know I have a couple of names for attendance. If there are enough, we can get a table, but, okay. So before this evening, I will take names and then we'll make sure we can get a...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but can everybody hear, are the mics? Mine is. Is it just me? It's probably just me, I'm sorry.
I will speak louder. One of the things that we have been working diligently at in our offices are minutes and our minutes are working well. Our archive minutes are on electronic school board and we do have those up and viewable as well as we have minutes for approval this evening. So just keep an eye on those and we'll continue to work at having those in... What I've worked with Ms. Dargion is having our minutes available at the last meeting of the month so that we can get things done on a monthly basis to keep things up to date. So it looks like we're working well on that. And the last thing that I have tonight, and it's an attachment to this agenda item, is I compiled a building capacity report for the committee. And the building capacity report does have a number of features to it. First, I put together a memo that really describes the report and it really takes a look at our current enrollment, what our current enrollment is for the Plymouth schools, and that is relative to our October 2016 submission to the Department of Education. So we also are looking at building capacity. The building capacity, and I'll walk through the chart in just a little bit. I'm gonna walk through the explanation on some of these items first, but the building capacity based on the occupancy certificate, with the exception of Plymouth North and Plymouth, the New Plymouth South, are at twenty-five students per seat, excuse me, twenty-five students per classroom. New Plymouth North and New Plymouth South, they're based on eighty percent capacity based on what MSBA guidelines are. So when the capacity for New North and New South, they're at eighty percent capacity, not at a hundred percent capacity, which is at twenty-five students. Eighty percent capacity is twenty students per classroom and that's how those numbers are derived. MSBA does set that as a rule on all their projects because what they like to see is that, you know, there's a stable number that can be used for schools because not every classroom has twenty-five students in it. When you take a look at AP courses, you took, you know, specialized programs that need a smaller class size, they use that eighty percent rule as a standard. In addition, I've also included district-wide programs, so we have a column that identifies the district-wide programs in each building, identified computer labs that we have that are inserted into classrooms that were once classrooms, but now they're a school-wide computer lab. And I think over time, we've added these labs, but we've also have been taking them out with the implementation of Chromebooks and also of us shifting programs back into schools. In addition, I added on the last column the build date and the renovation date. So you have on the column when the school was built, when it was last renovated, and it gives you a good idea of what we deal with in terms of age. So if you take a look at the chart, I think this chart is relevant and we will have this in electronic school board so that we can get a good idea of where we are with capacities. As I mentioned, when we were looking at the move from South Middle Fifth Grade back to South Elementary, we have shifted a lot of programs back into the original buildings like we did with Indian Brook, but we, our buildings are very busy, are very populated. And not only are, you know, when I first came to Plymouth nineteen years ago, we didn't have computer labs in classrooms, we didn't have specialized programs, and you can see that we've added quite a bit. And you can also see in this particular worksheet that Mr. Montron has been extremely busy with five major projects for renovation. We've had actually seven. We've had North High, South High, we've had PCIS, and we've had Indian Brook, Federal Furnace West. That's six programs that we've entered into for renovations. So we've been very, very active in trying to maintain our buildings and this report is generated based on a response from Dr. Sorenson at one of our last budget meetings to really get an idea of where we were and so we could have a good feeling of where our buildings stand as far as occupancy. So with that said, Mr. Vegley, I believe this document will be one of these documents that we have available as time goes forward. Absolutely.
That's good. It's good to have that one. Ms. Badger?
I should have a quick question. When I look at the HEDG numbers, so we've got two-hundred-and-ten enrolled in October, but then the hundred percent capacity is two-fifty, right? So is that because, so I know they have a kindergarten classroom that's at West Elementary, correct?
Yes.
So is the two-fifty capacity of the forty-seat different because they're using those other spaces, like classroom spaces for other needs? I just wanna make sure I'm reading it correctly.
Yeah, the HEDG capacity at a hundred percent is two-fifty. We do not have twenty-five students per classroom at HEDG. They're more like seventeen, eighteen, twenty-three. So when you take a look at how that is at a class set of twenty-five, in the elementary, we work extremely hard not to populate our classrooms at twenty-five. So that's, that is a, in the elementary, that's a pretty full classroom. And keeping in mind that HEDG Elementary is, the classrooms are smaller in square footage size than some of our other classrooms across the district.
Okay, thank you.
That's one of the things that we probably should add on here is what the average classroom size is square footage-wise.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a good column to add.
Dr. Sorenson?
Two things. This is really an excellent resource. This is concise, you can look it up on the chart, you can answer questions. I think it's excellent. I think that we received some unfair criticism at least twice in the last, in the last year we've been at a meeting, most recently at the Selectmen's meeting a couple of weeks ago, whereby a taxpayer questioned how well we manage, no, how well we care for our buildings, which I think is a really unfair criticism. Perhaps it wasn't a criticism, maybe it was just a question, so maybe I'll move along quickly then. Because we really do an excellent job at maintaining our buildings. And when you see when some of these buildings were built, I mean, it goes back to 1910, one of them. Mr. Montron's group does just an excellent job and I think, I hope those questions are just questions and not criticism. Thank you.
One of the things, you know, I didn't page down to the South Middle School building because, I mean, we put a lot of effort into that building to make it right and, you know, the amount of work that's happened in this district, the amount of resources that have been applied, and all of this is really based on us being proactive and looking at picking away. I mean, all these projects didn't happen on one year. They were slowly, methodically going after projects that we knew had to be done. So it wasn't gonna put a burden all at once on the community. So I think we're very fortunate that we did have that plan, we'll continue to put things on the agenda, but we've been very fortunate. And keep in mind that some of these projects were part of the Massachusetts Building Authority Green Repair Program, so we did get some level of reimbursement on them. So the more I think about this chart, the more I wanna add columns to put more information because it could show the value of the project and also the amount of reimbursement we got.
Right, and those projects, we gave back borrowing power on each one of them because they came in under budget.
They were well managed. I mean, we really had some good management on these projects.
Yeah, that was a point I tried to make the night that we were at the Selectmen's meeting.
And you made it well, by the way.
And I thought that was important, I'm glad you reiterated it because, yeah, when you look at the age of the buildings we have and the fact that they're in constant, continuous use for over a hundred years, yeah, and the problems we had with South are well documented, architectural issues, and I think the Selectmen agreed with that.
I'm sure we'll have more discussions as the days go forward.
Yeah. That's what we're here for. And Mrs. Frye, retirements.
We have two retirements that we've been notified about. Jean Fredette Sabell, a speech and language therapist with thirty years for Plymouth Early Childhood Center, and Anne Motika, twenty-nine years of service, a district-wide adaptive physical education teacher.
Very good. Ms. Badger?
On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, I'd like to thank these two individuals for their combined fifty-nine years of service to the district and wish them a happy retirement.
Very good. We don't have any correspondence tonight to report on, so we're ready for our program update from our facilities director, Dr. Maestis.
Yes, tonight we have Mr. Montron. He's here tonight, ironically after we just talked about some of his work. He's prepared to give an update on the facilities program. So we welcome Dr. Montron.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think you already covered it all, so I guess I can... The Facility Services Office is located at Oak Street School, which by the way, Dr. Sorenson, is 1902.
We didn't add that, did we?
That's the oldest building we have. Just wanna thank you for allowing us time to present our department. The day-to-day functions of the people in this department vary quite drastically from day to day. One day you could be cleaning a floor and the next day you could be chopping down a tree. Just depends on the needs of the district. There are a total of eighty-six individuals that make up the department, everything from custodians, secretaries, to maintenance people, skilled craftsmen, and of course, the custodians, which make up a bulk of it. There are fifty custodians. What we do is clean and maintain our seventeen buildings. We take care and maintain our buildings, fields and grounds. We prepare our capital and budget. We perform vehicle maintenance, waste removal. We track absenteeism and accounts payable, work order review and scheduling, facility scheduling, and utilities tracking. Our seventeen buildings, as we just heard from a couple of members, are wide-ranging in years. Now, they go from 1902 right through to the new South High School that we're just finishing now and will take occupancy in May. It totals in the neighborhood of a million six-hundred thousand square feet. Our fields and grounds are maintained by our head custodians and groundskeepers. We have approximately three-hundred-and-seventy acres of ball fields, grass, and parking lots that need to be maintained on a daily basis. Thank God tonight's gonna be rain because I wouldn't wanna see that two-and-a-half feet of snow that it would be if it were snow. We do do all of our own snow removal in the winter months and that includes plowing. We prepared the annual budget in the amount of $2,039,806, which this committee approved. And we will, we've prepared and will administer the capital program. The total requests were $9,324,905. Walk and chew bubble gum. We maintain a fleet of eighteen departmental vehicles, which include seven dump and utility, two stakebody rack trucks that are used for snow removal, and seven dump trucks. We have an aerial lift truck that presently is not in operation. It was a hand-me-down from the DPW and we have put that truck in for replacement under capital outlay this year. We also have a cube van, three F-150s, and two SUVs. We also maintain or help to maintain the remainder of the twenty-sixth apartment, twenty-six district vehicles. Those include everything from cars to school buses. The repairs are really done by one of our maintenance custodial floaters. Mike does a great job in trying to keep up with all of the maintenance and repairs. We do occasionally have to send things out to be repaired, but it's kept to a minimum. We do the waste removal at all of the schools. We have our trash compacting truck that goes around to each school, picks up the trash and takes it to C-Mass. That vehicle, thanks to this committee and the Capital Outlay Committee, was replaced last year. It just arrived this past week and, long haul. So we'll be putting that on the road and we'll be using our old rubbish truck to do cardboard recycling. Our truck driver and our maintenance floaters are also used to do material deliveries throughout the school district on a daily basis. Our absenteeism and accounts payable is done by our secretaries and our supervisor of buildings and grounds. That's to go through and not only track the absenteeism, but to fill vacancies. We use our four floaters in our office and when we don't have them anymore because they're already being used, we start checkerboarding people around the district to fill vacancies, especially in our two-man schools, our Cold Springs and Hedges where one man out and the whole shift is gone. Our work orders are done using SchoolDude. The program has turned out to be an excellent program to date. We have closed for this year 2,207 work orders, have twenty-one in process, and 121 new ones. They're watched every day by Frank Silva, who assigns to the skilled craft... They're, they're watched every day by Frank Silva, who assigns to the skilled craftsmen and any of our maintenance or custodial people that may have missed the work order in the queue. Facility scheduling is done with our Facilities Use Coordinator, Jill Daven. To date, we've got 165 community users, which is an increase of 75 over last year. So that's working well. They schedule the buildings themselves online. North High School continues to be our top draw, mainly for the Performing Arts Center and the gymnasium. All the schools, the gymnasium is used the most. And they're booked by outside groups and our own special events. And it is very tricky sometimes to go through and, and give everybody equal time in the gyms. Utility tracking and energy savings. We work closely with Mr. Carston and the business officer in conjunction with our skilled craftsmen and maintenance people to make the district more energy efficient and to help save thousands of dollars in cost avoidance funds throughout the year. Those funds are redirected into other student needs. In closing, I'd just like to be able to thank all the people in my department for their hard work and dedication. They do do a very good job of keeping our buildings in good shape and keeping, keeping the, the district as a whole looking extremely well, especially when you put our district against any other district in the state. I will put my schools up against any schools in the state for maintenance and custodial. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
You want to do the next slide, or?
Oh, yes, I forgot that. Last year, of course, we've got the South High School project. Will take completion, substantial completion on May 12. We've replaced carpeting and tile in four houses at PCIS. We renovated Apollo House to accommodate the relocation of the preschool from Mount Pleasant to the new Early Childhood Center at PCIS. We tied our SchoolDude facilities and our utilities direct programming together. What that means is that if you book, if you were to book the Little Theater here for Saturday between 9:00 and 12:00, when you book that room, it will automatically turn the heating, ventilating and air conditioning system on. We don't have to depend on someone to remember to turn it on for an event.
Very good.
And if you have any questions at all, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
Any questions? Feedback? I just want to say that the, the job you guys did on the preschool setup is excellent. I mean, I've heard more, a lot of feedback from parents and staff saying that the job was just
Thank you.
extremely well done, exceeded expectations.
Thank you. It was a very, it was a little bit of a challenge. It's trying to go from a middle school to a preschool. Quite a bit more to be done than I ever expected.
Very good.
Thank you.
And now we have our school improvement plan for PCIS.
Yes, tonight we have Principal Palladino here with his school council. There are many of his members here tonight. Looks like a full house, so we might need to get more chairs for you. We can get some more, we need to.
We can sit, we can just come up if anyone wants to.
Okay, so welcome, everybody. Welcome.
I don't want to use the mic, because I'm not feeling well. I don't want you guys all at work tomorrow.
If you're speaking.
They're afraid to get sick. Alright, so I prepared an opening statement so I could stay on point and not go off on a tangent. So I have everything prepared and I have shared responsibilities here, so hopefully we can stay focused. So thank you for having us tonight. Tonight, we're here to present the executive summary for our 2015 through 2017 school improvement plan and our new 2017-2019 school improvement plan. Today, we'll share data and discuss programs and initiatives that have been implemented over the last two years. I would like to stop by thanking our teachers, guidance counselors, and administrative team for making PCIS a great place to work and learn. I would also like to thank the students and families of PCIS for all their efforts in providing feedback and assisting us in the educational process. I would also like to thank the past and present PCIS school councils for their guidance and wisdom. They have been instrumental in providing feedback and generating thoughtful discussions during our monthly meetings. Currently, we have 19 members on our school council, including a community rep and a grandparent representative. We are happy to present our 2017-2019 school improvement plan, and we use the feedback from faculty, families, students and administrative team to develop this plan. And I'm very excited to present that to you today. Before I do that, I want to have some introductions here. I'd like to introduce Erica Lewis. She's a vice principal in Gemini House. Andy Schicoloni, who's here, he is a vice principal in Ranger House. Eric Foley, who is a vice principal in Mercury House. Lisa Murray, who is our math specialist. Rosario Level, who is our Spanish teacher. Kerry Cameron, who is our technology integration specialist. Dana Powers, who has her health and phys ed. Paul Capozzi, who is a parent representative. Oh, you're right next to me. Pam D'Ortona, who's our PTA president and school council member. And Jaclyn Hoxton, who is our grandparent representative. Thank you guys for joining us today. And we are going to start, if I do this right. You said upright.
Right.
Right?
There you go.
Alright, so Mrs. Lewis is going to start us off on goal number one.
I don't know if I'm on, am I on?
Yeah.
Okay. So our first goal is around safe environment, and we focused on not just our discipline data, but the things that we do to kind of prevent incidents from happening. So student engagement is a big part of keeping kids, you know, safe in school and keeping them involved and out of trouble. So we have a variety of after-school activities that I'm sure you're all aware of. Opportunities for kids to do arts after school, sports after school, et cetera. We've also, this year, added an ASD support period at the end of the day, one day a week, with some outside help. And this is meant to meet kids' social, emotional needs. We do have a large ASD population, and we do not have them in a program. We're trying to keep them in their home school. We had some professional development around that as well, from the collaborative. And we were implementing a student-teacher mentoring program this year, as well as the Project Purple support. And then we do a lot of our community outreach through our after-school groups, our Falcon Pride group, our ambassadors group. So we do our food baskets, our toy drive, et cetera. Also trying to keep connected with families through communication. We're doing a lot electronically, and you'll hear about that later on.
Do you want to talk about the programs we've brought in?
I do. Alright, looking at our discipline data, and this is something that I had to look at carefully to, to think about. So if you're looking at our bullying harassment numbers and our number of incidents in 14, 15, 15, 16, until now, we're dropped. We've gone from four to two to one. And looking at them as suspendable offenses, not everyone was, but three were in 14, 15. Two were last year, and currently we have one at the moment. The ISS/OSS numbers are higher, because that might be, there might have been one incident, but it might have been multiple days that a student had ISS or OSS or a combination thereof. Our bus incidents are down so far this year. They were up a little bit higher last year and will probably end around the same this year, so because we're looking at about eight. And again, you're looking at three of them being suspendable offenses and two days ISS and one day OSS.
I think I could jump in quickly. I mean, having those videos, those cameras on the buses have been instrumental to be able to kind of work with kids and work with, and they're feeling a safety having those on the buses, so it's been a huge help.
Our number of incidents that involve cell phones have been dropped dramatically from 15 incidents in 14, 15 to currently we have two. And again, a lot of this usually revolves around kids reporting, our families reporting to us. So it doesn't mean that there are less incidents, it's what's being reported to us that we're dealing with. And as of this year, we haven't had any of these be suspendable incidents. Same with social media and texting incidents. Again, we're relying on students to report. And I do think they're doing a better job of reporting, but I think we're doing a better job of educating our kids as well, which is going with the decrease from seven incidents in 14, 15, and we're down to two in our current year. And number of ISS and OSS are down as well. And this is just our overall suspension data, which has dropped from 12, 13. 56 OSS and 62 ISS were down to, last year as a full year, 27 OSS and 49 ISS. And current year, we're, we're well below that and we're past the 90th day. Repeat offenders, we do a lot to try and keep kids from becoming repeat offenders and figuring out what the root of their behavior is and why they're acting the way they are, and kind of decreasing their numbers, so that we're not constantly dealing with the same kids. Obviously, if you're dealing with them time and time again, there's more to the issue and it's not just a silly middle school mistake. So looking at our repeat offenders, for OSS, we had four in 14, 15, and then we had six last year and currently we only have one. And ISS/OSs, repeat offenders, total are 25, 14 in current year, five. So it looks like this year we will be lower than we have been in the past.
Alright, we have goal number two.
Sure. Great. The second goal in our current plan is focused on collaboratively engaging families in the school experience to support student learning. So as part of this goal, we host a number of different events at the school designed to bring families into the building, from awards nights to classroom activities to school musicals and sporting events. In addition, there's a significant focus on improving outbound communications to families via multiple channels. So electronic communications have certainly become a preferred channel, and we connect with families, as you can see on this slide, via social media such as Facebook and Twitter. In addition, we email school notices if we have an email on file, which increases the likelihood of information reaching parents and guardians. We use the electronic backpack, not the student's backpack, to deliver the information. I'll hand it over to Kerry to talk about some of the other communication channels.
So with having Aspen within the district, it has promoted through family events and going out in the beginning of the importance of having an email on file in the student, in the student record to facilitate that contact, because that way everything can go out. We start in the spring with the incoming fifth grade, I mean, incoming sixth grade, with the spaghetti dinner and telling them how to go get their Aspen account, because technically they can. Obviously, all students have an Aspen account. It's just now they're going to go live with the grading system. So we've, so we start that. At open house, we do a presentation again to reinforce that, how to get a parent account, and then parent conferences. At the current time, we have 995 students enrolled and 811 families have their own parent portal account. Many families still do use their student account. We try to discourage that, because it can get disabled very, very quickly, and they seem to get disabled very quickly right around report cards and progress report time. The other thing we have is the Tuesday communication sheet. So we have 945 families that do have at least an email in the Aspen profile right now. Every house and every team and every grade receives a Tuesday communication sheet with, with what is going on currently in the classroom. It provides consistency in communication, and it's going really well, I think. Just being informed, and especially with the email, it makes it very good.
So the next slide is the events that we try to do. It connects the families to the school. And if you look, in September, we have the Family Walk Through Day. The sixth grade family barbecue and open house for all the grades. In October, we have another open house. That's usually sixth grade. We have UMass Band Day, Middle School Night Under the Lights, and Student of the Month for sixth grade. In November, we have the Coffee House and the Honors Breakfast and Turkey Bowl and the Student of the Month. December, we have the Chorus Concert and the Band Concert and Student of the Month. January, we have the Guidance Night and the PCI Musical and the Student of the Month. In February, it's Honors Breakfast and Student of the Month. Basketball Bonanza, which is, always brings a great group of family and the kids. They talk about it all the time. And it's great to see the, the teachers playing with all the kids and gets very competitive. We have spaghetti dinner and Honors Breakfast and Student of the Month in April. This April, we're going to bring something new in that we've just started working on, which is the color run. It's not up there, which is, the goal is to have the middle school kids and their, the big buddies that will be talked about later, come in, and it's going to be a 20-minute run on the field after school. And parents are going to be able to run, too. May, we have Paw Sox, the art show, Coffee House, Student of the Month, Chorus and Band Concerts. And then, of course, June is the Awards Night and Promotion Night.
I think the idea here is to get, provide opportunities at least once a month for families to come into the school, you know, be exposed to the students, the staff, and the building and the culture. And I got to make one quick plug. We do have our musical this weekend. It's going to be Lion King Jr., so tickets are available, but they are selling quickly, so.
The next slide, I feel, being part of it, is a huge honor for the town of Plymouth. PCIS was the only school in Massachusetts and one of the only school, one out of 170 schools that was voted the National PTA School of Excellence. And we did that by welcoming, welcoming the connection of our families. So the goal is to make sure that when the kids are walking through the door, the parents are walking through the door, that you feel welcomed. And not only does it happen here at PCIS, Ms. Dolphin is wonderful in the morning. Ms. Womer is great in the afternoon, but it's also happening everywhere in the district. So it just shows as a town, as, as a town and for this middle school, that it's great to come in the building.
One, one item to add, just on this second goal, is we're not content yet with the communication. One of the things that we talked about quite a bit at our last meeting is that we still have 40-plus families that we're not actively connected to via email. There's a lot of families that may not have internet access. So how do we continue to build on the success we've had with some of the channels and continue to engage with some of those other families?
See, that's the population. There is a segment of the population that's not able to utilize the Aspen, the email communication, and that's something that, as a school council, we're going to be looking into and see how we can connect them, even regardless of whether you have internet connectivity or not. So it's definitely, that is not noted here. It came up at our last meeting. It's something we're going to have some discussion on, and hopefully come up with a way to get those parents the information they need. I'm going to handle the next goal three, and it's around the academic performance in ELA Math and Science as measured by student data from district and state assessments. So we were designated a Level 2 school on our Park School Report Card. And some of the things, I'm going to go through some data, but some things you'll notice are overall students, more students are in Level 4 and 5, and I can show you some of those data. And that's the, you know, when you look at Level 2, it kind of reverses itself. You know, Level 1 is the best as far as you're looking at a district or a school, but when you're looking at Park scores, student scores, 4 and 5 are the best. So when you're looking at, when you see Level 4 and 5, just flip, you know, what, what the, what the school is, their designation. Overall, student growth percentages are moving, are improving and within the average range. High-need students, growth percentages are improving and within the average to high range. And that's something, probably about four or five years ago, as a school, we were flagged is, you know, that, that population was a population that was struggling. So there were a lot of things that weren't put in place over the last seven or eight years that I think have helped. One of the things that we're looking to improve on, and it's through some initiatives that we're, we're starting this year and we've started in the past, is improving our, our sixth grade scores. You're going to see they're slightly lower. We have some ideas to help that, but one of the things you'll see with the data is when they, when, when they leave us, they're growing throughout the whole time they're at PCIS. So when they start at one point, by the time they leave, their growth has improved. So you'll see that in some of our data. So you can see, you know, from the last two years, 2015, we had 77% of our students in, taking the algebra. So in eighth grade, they take an eighth grade algebra test if they're taking Honors Algebra. And if they're taking the CP Algebra, they're taking a math grade 8. So it's two separate assessments in, in eighth grade. So you can see, you know, I can go through the whole thing, but in algebra grade 8, we had 77% of our students in Level 4 or 5. This year, we had 86%. And you look at our student growth going from 40, it went up about 10 points in our student growth. Our high-need student, students, 94% of them were in the levels 4 or 5, and our growth was at about 50. Grade 8 math, again, you can see, even though our levels went down 3%, our student growth went up 12, 12 points there. So you can see the level and then the growth. In our grade 8 ELA, it went down slightly through. In our Grade Eight ELA, it went down slightly, 3%, but our student growth went up. Same thing in our high needs. The students on Level Four and Five went down a bit, but our growth was up to 49. So, you can see, you know, when they're measuring each individual student on their growth at students that score at the same level, so they're comparing to their peers and how they're growing. Our Grade Eight Science, I know there's been a lot of changes in that curriculum, they have stayed steady. There isn't too much movement in our Grades Eight Science. And then, looking at our high-needs Math Grade Eight, Ms. Frye's blocking my view here, but, so, you can see our growth in our high-needs Grade Eight has grown tremendously. Grade Seven, again, you're looking, there's very little movement as far as the Level Four or Five, but our growth is improving in both our high-needs Math and Grade Seven Math, as well as our Grade Seven ELA and high-needs Grade Seven. So, you know, we're moving in the right direction, and this is the area that we're going to spend a little bit of time on. Grade Six, you know, where we have more students, percentage of students in Level Four or Five, but only very little growth or improvement in our student growth percentages in Grade Six. So, you can kind of see, if we flipped this and did sixth grade first, you would see that growth improve as they leave here at PCIS. So, some of the things that we're doing, actually, next week, we're going to be meeting as a committee to look at our schedule, to find if this is a model that we can do some creative things around supporting students. Right now, there's very little time for students to receive support in their day, and one of the things that I know in discussions with teachers, in parents and students, well, not necessarily students yet, but they'll be involved in that process, and we'll talk about that later, but just looking at ways to support kids. One of the things at PCIS, the Title One Schools that feed into PCIS, they're supported at their elementary schools, but we don't have that Title One support here. So, we're trying to find creative ways to support those students. If you're a special ed student on IEP, you have to be pulled somewhere to receive those supports, and that's one of the things we want to look in the schedule. Is there a way that these kids aren't missing? And there's a whole boatload of kids that don't receive that support on IEP, that still need work with their teachers, where we're going to look at, looking at a schedule that will help with that. Lisa Murray, who's our Math Specialist, when we noticed that our Grade Six, you know, Lisa was originally put in place because our Grade Seven math scores were lower than the other grades, and now, they've kind of leveled, they brought it up. So, one of the things we noticed with our Grade Six population, that they needed that type of support. So, I tease Lisa, we pull her in one direction for Grade Seven, and I anchor back and put her into, receive some Grade Six support. So, that's going to hopefully help those students. They're identified students by their test scores, teacher recommendations, and those kids work with Mrs. Murray. To help that literacy initiative, we have implemented a half-day drop everything and read, where everyone in the building on a half a day literally drops everything what they're doing. You'll see pictures of kids on the gym floor, teachers reading, we're all, at that moment, dropping everything and reading, and teaching kids good reading habits, and it's been pretty popular. One of the things we've implemented is to share best practices, is collegial walkthroughs, where we have teachers that have a nice falcon on their door, and what that means, it's an open classroom. So, if a teacher wants, has heard good things about a teacher and their practices at any point, as long as that falcon is on the door, the teachers can walk in there and take a look at what they're doing. And one of the nice things about that is through the walkthroughs, we may see something in a class, and we think, wow, that would have worked nicely. I have seen Mr. Powers do something in his class, why don't you take a walk through his class and kind of see how he transitions between activities? And it's been, it's been very helpful. And we're going to enhance that a little bit, because I think, you know, one of the things with teachers is they are very busy and they don't always have the time, so we're going to look to kind of help with that process, to get teachers into other teachers' classrooms. And I think that's, you know, we learn best by sharing our best practices. You know, we've done, we've spent a lot of time with professional development around social emotional health. I think if you talk to most principals in the state and the district, you know, one of their biggest struggles is supporting kids with social emotional issues, and we've done a lot with professional development. We've put a lot in practice here, whether it's student-to-teacher mentors, whether it's working with a South Bay to come in here and actually provide that support. Mrs. Lewis talked about ASD support, Project Purple, and just trying to give these kids, A, make them feel connected, supporting them, but also giving some tools that they can manage that. One of the things that we did, because there are kids that struggle getting into school, and the councilor's office is way at the other end of the building, so we actually moved that office to the front of the building, where the kids don't have to walk through the school to get settled in for the day. They're able to actually do that, once they step foot in the classroom, through the front doors, there's the support, and then, the goal is to then get them to class. We've implemented vertical teaming, four times a year, from Grade Six to Grade Eight, through our department leads, which is a group of teachers that volunteered to kind of spearhead this, and looking at, you know, skills that kids have in Grade Six, and what do they need in Grade Eight, and then doing that planning. So, when they leave Grade Eight, you know, that, those skills are being taught from Grade Six, Seven, and Eight. And now, with that, because we've spent some time, they're doing some creative planning on different types of things that they're doing in the classrooms as a group, so it's very exciting. And then, our virtual high school that Lisa Murray works with, we have students taking advanced-level classes, not only in Grade Eight, but we've identified kids in Grade Six that are taking an Algebra Math class, and then they'll take Geometry in eighth grade, and we have some kids that are taking Geometry and Algebra Two in eighth grade. So, again, just identifying those kids and supporting them, because it's not all about the struggling learner, it's all about the high-achieving kid that needs to be challenged. And then, one of the things we're highlighting this year is that support period. I talked about kids who don't receive the IEP support, but are in need of some support. We have teachers that have volunteered to take a duty and work with students during that time. We have a schedule that is set that's going to be reviewed tomorrow, that'll go out to teachers, so if you have a kid that's really struggling with a concept, or is behind, or has been out, there is, there's a teacher identified every period that has volunteered to work with these students to help them. Again, looking at our data, you know, some of those kids, to see what we can do to help them grow. So, those are some of the things that we're doing to kind of help with the data that I was able to show you today, but I think, you know, if I could really, you know, when it comes to, you know, we have almost 1,000 students in the school, and if you look at that discipline, and if you talk to our teachers, the behaviors that are in that class, you know, we're not seeing the types of behaviors that you would think of in a middle school, and I think it's the work that's done with our teachers. I have always said, good instruction prevents poor behavior. You know, and just the relationship building, our teachers and our administrators and our guidance counselors do to support kids, to make them feel wanted, to make them feel like they can achieve. So, it's a huge team effort here. And I have to say, again, parents supporting us and trusting us to do right by their kid is extremely important. So, I didn't stay on script there, and I apologize. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Powers.
So, a really important goal in our minds is goal number four, which is to enhance students' awareness of their civic responsibilities and increase their participation as contributing members of the 21st century global community, trying to help students develop into that all-around positive member of whatever community or society they're in. In order to prepare our students for 21st century learning, we believe we need to promote the importance of continued education beyond high school. And to do this, we at PCIS have started a few different college awareness or career readiness type programs, and part of this is because we feel that by understanding the importance of it in middle school, those high school years might become a little more important to the students, understanding how it might affect what they want to do after. Recognizing that, as freshmen or sophomore, you might be a little bit behind, but if you go into high school, understanding the importance of what can happen after high school, those years become a little more valuable. So, it starts off with our Guidance Department, with their curriculum and presentations based on plans after high school. They do a really good job of, I think, breaking it down where middle schoolers can understand it, feel confident about it, and not be intimidated by what's happening way down the road. We have college visits at the middle school level. Mass Maritime Academy was a big one, but through different feedback from students, teachers, parents, et cetera, recognizing kind of the military aspect of Mass Maritime, we felt like adding a more traditional college to that experience would be valuable as well. So, Bridgewater State University is also a college that we'll be touring. March Madness is an awesome event at PCIS, kind of just helps build college awareness. Students can earn all kinds of cool prizes from different schools, like a college t-shirt or a lanyard or a hat, or, and they get to do that by learning a lot about their teachers, where they went to college, what degrees they have, answering trivia questions, and winning some cool gear in the process. A new thing that Mr. Palladino was talking about is PCIS is asking alumni who are current college students, PCIS alumni, they're going to be coming back and speaking to our current students about their college experiences and how what they did at the middle and high school level helped them be successful, and how valuable this time is now. So, that's kind of a quick conclusion of where the focus is being put on, looking ahead down the road a little bit.
We're also looking at the responsibility of giving back. We feel that it is important for the students to reflect on where they came from and give back to the community that brought them up. Some of the components we're doing with this is we're working with the Plymouth Family Network, which we're fortunate to have housed in Apollo House, as well as the Early Childhood Center in Apollo House. We have a babysitting club that went back and worked with the kids in the preschool, which was a great opportunity for them. The seventh grade senators last year was a new program we had, and we brought the kids back to the elementary schools that they came from. So, it was alumni coming back to an elementary school, which was kind of cool, and the students ran kickball games and arts and crafts with the students, and the principals and the administration and staff at those six feeder schools were very accommodating and very welcoming for us to come back. We're looking forward to that again this year. The other pieces that we give back to is our community itself. We do food drives around Thanksgiving. We did the Great American Milk Drive this year, in case you didn't hear, Devin McCordy happened to be here back in October, and he was here helping us, you know, celebrate what we've been doing to give back to our community. A big initiative that we're trying to push that's going to be new here at PCIS is a Big Buddies Program, and we're looking at taking some of our eighth graders and bringing them, again, back down to the preschool program and create a Big Buddy Program for those little ones in the preschool.
All right, so that is our executive summary of where we were. I don't know if you want to take questions now or go to where we're going. Are you silent?
Anybody have any questions now, or you want to just keep, Ms. Hunt?
I don't have a question, but a comment. I know that I've congratulated the PTA several times for your award, and I think I had mentioned when I wrote, when I read the letter, that hopefully, I don't know if you guys can think about maybe sending somebody to the national conference. I was hoping to go, and that way, if nobody could be there, I could accept the award on your behalf, but I don't think I'm going now. But, I just want to put it out there that it's considered training, it's a legitimate expense if you are able to send a couple of PTA members. Not only is it an amazing learning opportunity with workshops and all the resources that you get, but there's also the vendor fairs and fundraisers. It is in Las Vegas this year. But, you know, you can double up in rooms, and it's considered training, so maybe it would be nice if you guys, especially since you are the only school in Massachusetts that won this award, it would be really great if you could work it out. I believe it's right after school gets out.
It's the 25th.
Yeah.
We can discuss that.
So, I, you know, it just would be, I'm just putting the bug in your ear. I know that the Mass PTA tells everybody every year that it's a legitimate training expense, but a lot of people don't take advantage of it.
You had me sold on Vegas.
Kind of family vacation around that weekend.
Absolutely. We've seen PTAs pack as many people in a room as possible in order to make it work, so, it'd be great.
Definitely worth looking into, and I like that aspect of it.
Especially, again, since you are the only school in Massachusetts that got it, and there's thousands of people there, and to be able to accept that award in front of them is pretty cool.
Thank you.
Dr. Sorensen?
Through the chair to Dr. Maestas. We had the discussion at the council meeting last Thursday night about the small percentage, perhaps under 1% of those families who do not have internet access, and I know sort of personally with one of those families, and the students are sort of too embarrassed to even admit that they don't have internet access at home. Now, a decade ago, or perhaps 15 years, we actually had a number. We had done a survey, and we had a number. It's outdated now, but I wonder if we have the means, because we can't do it electronically, but I wonder if we have the means to find out across the district, what percentage of our students do not have internet access at home? Because I think the gap is widening with each passing month. That particular child is falling further away from where education exists today.
Yep. I think there are two factors. I think there's one, which is a technology gap, availability, and I think the other one that we're struggling with across the district is the language proficiency, and for us to get documents to parents where they can actually read in their native language, that is becoming a huge struggle for us. But, one of the things that we can consider doing when we look at our next survey that we offer to our parents, we may want to add that as a question as to what they have access to. One of the other things that we do have available to our parents that are in a situation where they might need some support for technology is there are a couple of programs that are out there that really make technology very affordable, that we can pass on if we do know families that do need that level of support, so they can actually get internet, home internet installed for very, very inexpensive.
That would be an excellent reinforcement for somebody to respond to a questionnaire, the possibility that you could get internet access very inexpensively if you respond to this questionnaire.
So, that's something that we can promote, and I know our, I think you are right about the numbers are increasing for need. I know years ago, we did have a survey, it was back in the Nick Mycosy Science Coordinator days, and we did that survey, and it was in a 90%.
90% had access.
Had access. And I think, I'm not sure what that number is now. Another problem that we have is, I think, people have cellphone internet access, but they don't have a desktop. So, I mean, it's really difficult to do all your work and fill out forms and do all this stuff, whether or not cellphone-enabled, a lot of the utilities that they use. So, you know, a lot of people do everything on the cellphone, they don't have home access, but, so I think it'd be something to discover and explore what we could do to get.
That number would be helpful, not just to this council, but to all the councils.
Yes, Ms. Hunt?
There was a program, I don't know if I mentioned it to you or not, but I heard about it, where there's one school district that actually uses one of their school-owned school buses as a hotspot, and they'll park it in areas that they know have a high percentage of students that don't have internet access. I don't remember what district it is, but it was in Massachusetts that did it. And then, I think Comcast has, and then, there's also cable in the classroom. They have a program as well, too, so if that's an issue. I know that they used to have a flyer that we could send home to PTAs and stuff, so.
We can get that out again, but we do have that information. I think when you're looking for, it's not available, and I think we have to almost create a resource spot for parents that come in, and it would probably help if our staff knew that these options are available for parents, because that's how they find out, you know, when a councilor has a conversation on the phone, a principal has a conversation, if they have this information in their, you know, in their office or readily accessible, they can actually pass this stuff out.
All right, so our next school improvement plan is from 2017 to 2019. Paul Capozzi is going to start.
Sure. Just to introduce, the first goal of our new school improvement plan focuses on 21st century tools and digital citizenship, which really aligns with the discussion that we just were having. This goal also aligns with the district goal to enhance student growth, health, welfare, and civic responsibility. So, learning to use the latest technology is critical, but we also have to focus on using it responsibly. And it's important to ensure that students are aware of their cyber profile and their behavior as they move into high school, then into college, and then into the workforce. And this is more of an issue in today's learning environment than it's ever been. So, a few actions we plan to take to achieve this goal are, first and foremost, to integrate technology awareness and cyber behavior into the health studies curriculum. We're also going to use mentors and assemblies to help model preferred behavior. Not everyone is a great role model in terms of digital profiles. Providing cyber safety workshops to staff, which then can be applied to the classroom and learning environment, again, to help with the role modeling, and identifying guest speakers on the topic to continue the education and the discussion in terms of what are appropriate behaviors. With respect to the goal, we'll measure success based on the number of cyber safety and cyber bullying incidents, as well as feedback that we receive from students and staff.
All right, so I'm going to turn this over to Jacqueline, who's going to talk a little bit about this goal, and I'll help out, too.
So, this is my first year on the council, and.
Get the microphone.
I, so, you know, I'm new to all this, but, so, the goal is to engage collaboration with all families. Specifically, PCIS will work to foster relationships with and engage grandparents as the primary caregiver and English-language learner families. So, I am here to represent the grandparent population, who is now a growing population of raising their grandchildren. I've been. I've been raising my grandson since he was 18 months old, and he's now 11. And there are a whole set of challenges with that, for both the child and for the grandparent. And it can be a little bit of a takeoff of your, your commentary around the internet and having the internet and having, you know, technical expertise. I think we're all trying, but we're grandparents, so things are different than when we had our own children. So I'm hoping that being on the council this year, I can help Mr. Palladino gain a sense of how much of a population is out there in our town, and be a contact person for some of those grandparents who are struggling with their role. And, you know, to try to help the children, I mean, my grandson would, would never tell anyone that this is what's going on with him. So there's that whole social-emotional piece that, it's very complicated. So I'm hoping that I can offer some insight to the council on that, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that.
Thank you. I basically tackled Jacqueline at the open house when I heard she was a grandparent, and she was involved. And I'm thankful to have her on the council, because she, again, has, you know, she's living with it, and she can provide a lot of feedback for us and support. And I, I've done some work with the council on aging. I've attended support meetings with grandparents, and after hearing their story, this has kind of become a mission of mine to help these families, because they do struggle, not all of them, but, and they're looking for support. And we're going to, we've already began this. We've already sent out a survey to all our families, asking for families to identify themselves, you know, and we have, have a database, and we've already been in communication with Head Start, who's going to help us in, in providing programs and information that they may have. I mean, just in our school council meeting, we learned a lot about what's out there and that the grandparents may not know. But I think, you know, what we're doing in March is going to hold a workshop for grandparents around cyber safety, around the internet, around, similar to what Paul was talking about, good cyber citizenship, and, and allowing grandparents to come together as grandparents is huge, and that's a big component to that. So that's why we're identifying this population, so they can be supported maybe a little differently than we would support the overall population at, at PCIS. So, you know, we're, we're very excited about that, and I want to thank Jacqueline for opening up and, and being part of this, because it's, it's, it's needed. And then along the same lines, as she mentioned, the ELL population, that is a struggle, because of language barriers, because of, you know, not feeling comfortable coming into the school and trying to find ways to make our school more comfortable for them to want to come to. We've, Mr. Foley has made a mural of, that has welcome, it's, it's, it's the map of the earth, and then welcome in all the different languages. So we're going to be providing, doing some other things to make PCIS a little more welcoming to that population as well. We have goal number three, Mr. Shikoloni?
Yes. Goal number three, improve student achievement in ELA, mathematics, social studies, and science as measured by student data from district and state assessments. Creating a sustaining and learning environment in which all students are provided with multiple opportunities to achieve their personal best has always been and always will be priority of PCIS School Council Administration and staff. Essential to creating and sustaining such learning environment is providing high-quality instruction, all necessary support for students. I think Mr. Palladino talked about moving forward, that we're going to, how we're going to meet this goal, with some of the things that we're implementing, and make sure that each student is prepared for these different assessments. I think one of the things that we talked about in our meetings is essential to this goal, is the ongoing discussion and feedback from the students and the staff and the parents, that we're constantly getting information back in on how, how these tests are, where they're going with them, and what we can do with them. So, you know, I think we do a lot of testing here, and where the teachers are using that testing to help drive their instruction. But we also want to make sure that, you know, all, we're sending that well-rounded student out with all the other things that we're doing, too. So I think we use a lot of the data to drive our curriculum.
Goal number four, Ms. Ariel?
Goal number four, we want to create a student leadership group and give students a voice in the building leadership and school culture. We want to make students a part of the discussion. We want to hold this group during the school day, so that all students can have an opportunity, so it's not only limited to students who can take the after-school bus or who can get a ride home, but other students as well who may not be able to do that. We want students to be able to build leadership groups, build leadership skills while working with teachers and administration, and we want them to build relationships with the teachers and administration as well. We want them to be able to lead discussions with teachers, administrations, and other students, and find out their opinions of the school and what ways they would like to see their school improve.
All right, so those are our four goals that we're working on for the next two years. We're very excited for the things that we're going to be implementing and moving forward. So, thank you, guys, for your time. If you have any questions, we're.
Any, any questions on the new goals?
Good presentation.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Before we go into the rest of tonight, we have a request for a five-minute break.
Who wrote that note? I want to know who wrote that.
It wasn't me. I mean, I wrote the note, but it wasn't me.
Let's get restarted. Now, we have two trips to talk about, two out-of-state trips. And the first is the international field trip request for Plymouth North High School's Spanish exchange program.
I got ahead of Dr. Maestas there, sorry.
No, no problem. I know we, I was, I was talking to, to Rich, and I got carried away. So tonight, we have Linda and Peter, they're here tonight to provide information on this trip to Spain, and I'll turn it over to Linda.
Thank you. First of all, I passed out a, passed out a thank you note from last year's.
That's good, actually, that's a little loud.
Is it, is, yeah, is this better?
Some of us are hearing challenged.
Can you hear me now?
That is.
We would just like to express our gratitude towards you, the school committee, for approving last year's Spanish exchange program with Colegio de la Asunción of Granada, Spain. The experience has enriched all of our lives, both the students, the teachers of Plymouth North, and as well as the whole community from Colegio de la Asunción. Often it's said that the world keeps getting smaller with technology. Nothing compares to the personal interaction with another culture. We discovered how, even though we are all unique individuals, we still share some of the same emotions, troubles, and dreams. With your help, we made the world small by making our families larger, and I truly mean that. One of the best things about last year's trip was one of the worst things, which was seeing several students crying and hugging each other and departing. It was, it was just, it was heart-wrenching to see them, but it was also great, because they've continued their friendships, and they have such an amazing experience on their, on their, on their backs now, and that's wonderful. And when I came before you a couple of years ago, I had also mentioned that that was the turning point for me in high school, when I had an opportunity to go travel to a foreign country, which was Spain, and know what my passions were, and know where I needed to go from there. So we would like to thank you for that, and here we are before you again, asking to do the same trip. It's quite simple. The group that we worked with, the company that we worked with, did an excellent job coordinating everything, finding us a school, and we've chosen to stay with that school. We truly have a bond with that school. So the company, they're called now Forum, but it was Promotor. And they've put together basically the same itinerary for us, around the same dates that we had gone the last time. And the only difference is, is that when the Spanish students come here, instead of coming just before we went to Spain, which was right in April, they would be coming in the beginning of September. It would be just about the Tuesday or Wednesday after Labor Day, which would be wonderful, because last time when they came here, at the end of April, we had a snowstorm. So it would be nice to have a little bit of nicer weather to show them around Plymouth, so. And you, I just passed out to you the current itinerary that they had just sent me about a week ago. The prices are basically the same, and it all depends on how many students are going, the price drops, obviously, with the more students that do go.
So that's $2,100 to $2,600?
No, it's actually, that was the price that they had quoted me originally, and in the itinerary, you will see on almost the last page that the prices are pretty much within that same range. They're under 26, but.
It ranges from $2,440 to $2,580.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just a, a question, the, how many students went last time?
16.
16, okay.
And they had 12 come here.
Right.
Very good. Anything else, any other points you wanted to make, or?
Um, it just, it, it was just, it was an amazing trip. It was great for the students, and I, I can't thank you enough for letting this happen. It's, Plymouth North has become a melting pot here in Plymouth. We have so many international students coming in. When the students came here to North, they were, they were just so excited to be with our students, and they loved Plymouth North. I don't know if you were able to see the PNN episode that took place just after that, but Angela Jimenez was interviewed, and she just had nothing but great things to say about, about our school and how exciting the, the experience was for her students as well. And I, I would be happy to answer questions. I apologize that I don't know what else to say, however, to me, it all seems that it's, it's very straightforward, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll bring it back, I'll bring it back to the board, then. Anybody have any questions? Yep, Ms. Hunt?
I sound like a broken record, because I'll always support this. And I've spent some time in Granada, and it's beautiful. Are you going to the Alhambra? I didn't see that on here.
Yeah.
We, yes, that is one of the field trips that's organized by the school itself. One of the great things about the exchange program is beyond what you see in this itinerary, we and the other school arrange in field trips and activities that take place while, on the, on the itinerary, it says intercombio or exchange program. That's when we're with the school, and we did. We actually took a trip to Alhambra, and so the families went with us, and it was great.
And if I can elaborate on that, I think I've worked with a few other companies in, in other contexts, too, and the, the exposure, they're not just like field trips, like, yay, let's go to Six Flags. All of these are very carefully thought out, like cultural enrichment pieces, from going to an olive oil factory to, you know, traveling down south and seeing the difference in architecture and everything else. So I think that's one of the strengths that we saw in this program that's really carried back and, for, from a comparison standpoint. I was really appreciative of that.
It's just nice, because it's multicultural, too, the Alhambra. You get to see other, other things that I didn't realize that Spain just isn't, you know, Spanish, it's from other, other areas that have settled there, so.
Definitely. And we, and we get an experience of a lot, a lot of that when we go there.
Dr. Sorenson?
At the risk of being redundant, let me ask you, have you heard of any students who, has anybody approached you who might be interested but can't afford it?
Not yet. We have not set out an interest announcement for this. We were waiting for your approval. In my experience, I have never experienced anyone who has said that they would like to come, but they could not afford it. I am fully aware that there are students that, that that is, is an issue for them. One of the good things about getting this approved now is that they have a year and a half to do some fundraising and save the money and work towards that, which is.
That would have been my follow-up question, thank you.
Which is substantially more time than the last one, so it kind of sets people up a little better with the hype.
Is, April 11th the spring break vacation in 2018?
Well, it would be typically the third week of April, and that's what we have had forever, so.
Okay, well, April 11th would not be the third week.
It's the Wednesday from the documents, it's the Wednesday before, so they would leave the Wednesday before April break.
Okay, all right.
And then go into April break.
And to clarify the dates, we would leave the evening of the Wednesday, so we wouldn't be missing Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We'd be functionally missing Thursday and Friday of school, and then that would carry through to the break.
Good. Any other questions? And this is an action item. I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the field trip to Spain in April 12th, the 22nd of 2018.
Seconded by Mrs. Burgess. And any further discussion? Then please vote with the school board, electronic school board.
Excellent.
There you go. Anomalous. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you very much.
You might see a hunt applying for this job.
I hope so. I'm looking forward to it.
Next, we have another trip, Plymouth South High School Providence Bruins.
Yes, this, you know, it's one of the policies that we have in the district, that if it's an out-of-state field trip, has to come from a school committee. I, I do know that we have, we can go in Massachusetts, that trips that are much longer distance than Providence, but tonight, we are here because it's an out-of-state field trip, and athletic director from Plymouth South High School, Scott Fries, here to give, give a background on the, on the trip.
Yeah, so we're going to have the opportunity for our cheer and dance team, hopefully, to go to Providence and be able to perform on, in between periods of the Providence Bruins game. It's kind of a first-time opportunity to have done that. We have some, cheerleading coach has some people that she knows from the Providence Bruins, so she was able to reach out to them, and, so that's kind of where we're at.
Any questions? Mrs. Burgess moves.
Providence Bruins field trip to Rhode Island.
And seconded.
She was, I was pointing that you had your second over there.
I was seconding before she was done, sorry.
How eager we are to.
That was a fantastic question.
Yep.
That was easy, huh?
Any further discussion? Dr. Sorenson?
Oh, before we vote, my question is really not about this trip. Does the committee feel that we need to rewrite the policy to this Providence as the exception to the out-of-state requirement?
I wouldn't. It's not, it's not that big a deal, is it, for you?
I, as long as I can go after Brian Palladino in his presentation, that's the only thing I care about.
Planning, planning-wise.
Okay, just asking.
We could have put you earlier, yeah. I agree.
It would save, it would save people having to come to this meeting for a Providence trip, or a Nashua trip, or something like that. We could list some cities that were exceptions to the out-of-state requirement.
Yeah, I was just going to say, do you like mileage?
For me personally, I, I like, I think the public likes to hear the trips that are taking place. This is the best opportunity for them to do that, and it's not that big of a hardship.
Just asking.
Scheduling, I agree. We could have put you first.
I was watching at home, so.
Oh, you, you're the one.
With that being said, I'd like to put a save the date, because I, well, I have a captive audience, and I also know that all the viewers that you guys have, May 21st, we're going to have our first annual co-golf tournament between North and South Boosters together. So I'm very, very excited. We've never done this before, having a fundraiser for both schools together. So we're really excited about this, and, so it's May 21st.
Okay. Now, we have a motion, we have a second, no further discussion, so now we need to vote on it. And if you would do it on electronic school board, please? Anomalous.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did anybody have anything? They took a look at the sheets?
Yeah.
You did?
Yeah.
No, I mean, you had a question.
No, no, no.
Not whether you looked at the sheet or not.
You were just like.
All right, so no questions. Any reports or proposals from committee members?
Exactly.
Yes, Ms. Hunt?
I have a couple. I, one of them, I missed the last meeting, so I wasn't able to report out on that. A few weeks ago, I was able to attend a ESSA meeting at the Department of Ed. It was a feedback meeting, kind of a work group, I guess, to discuss ESSA and state implementation of it. My group was primarily invited to speak on parent involvement. So we, we had a lot, you know, to talk about as far as, you know, parents getting involved. And one thing that I did want to mention is they're still, they still are collecting feedback on ESSA, and if you go to the website for the department, there are forums that you can click on, read about the proposed changes, and, you know, this is the time. This is really the only time you're going to be able to have some say in what's happening, so please, everybody that wants to, go on and add your two cents. The other thing is, the last week, I was invited, or the week before last, I was invited to have a tour of the Edward Kennedy Institute, and that was really an amazing experience. And I did bring some materials back, and I shared them with Dr. Maestas, and I think I mentioned before that I had talked to somebody from there, and they have a really great field trip, and I'm not sure if anybody from Plymouth has ever gone on that before, but A, I think it's a great replacement now that we don't do a Washington, DC trip. it's a great replacement now that we don't do a Washington DC trip. It's a day trip. I actually got to sit in on, they have a model of the Senate chambers, and I got to sit in and watch a school actually debate and vote on a proposed bill that each month the institute has a different bill that the kids argue. This was on rules and laws applying with, what are they called? Drones. You know, so it was very relevant to the kids. They got to talk about what should be allowed with drones, what regulations should be in drones. They were encouraged to get up and convince their other senators, you know, their points of view. They have a lot of programs. They have like a K through three program, and then a three through eight, and an eight through 12. It's almost like a model senate situation. It's free. It's just a really good opportunity. They'll even help you and assist with the cost of busing if for some reason the school can't afford to go there. So I brought back some flyers, and it's just, I think it's just a great alternative if we haven't done that yet. And the last thing is the distinguished visitors' committee met last week. We're really getting into getting ready for our upcoming trip this summer to Shishikahama. Dr. Miestis and I have met, and we pretty much have the interview committee set and ready to go. We've got a lot of applications this year to go through, and the interviews are going to be set in the next couple of weeks. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Alumni or anything?
There's your mic. He's okay.
PYDC reports, the minutes were attached to our packets. Anybody?
That was the old minutes that I gave last time.
Have they met since the last meeting?
Yes, they have, but I was not able to attend.
Dr. Miestis, do you have anything you want to point out?
Yeah, I can highlight the meeting. We have a group of leaders on the PYDC organizational team that they're looking at filing a federal grant to help support the work of PYDC. So there's a group that is working to complete the application. It's a very rigorous application, and that is in process now. There's also a group that is working with Amy LaFort from the Substance Abuse Prevention Collaborative. It's also known as SAPSE, and it's looking at engaging in a campaign, very similar to the campaign that we had years ago with smoking, and just putting information out in schools and posters and sticker campaign to highlight awareness of the dangers of engaging in drugs and alcohol. But one of the things that they would like to do is highlight how many students that are not engaging, and the number is significant. So how do, you know, why not celebrate and share that we have a lot of kids that are taking responsibility of not engaging in consuming alcohol and things of that nature. So there was great discussion on that campaign, and our students will be working on collateral to be developed and put into our schools that are developed by our students and endorsed by the PYDC group. And Amy LaFort is going to schedule or ask to come and speak to the school committee regarding the work that she's doing, so that you can all get a sense from what this coalition is doing regionally. And so when she's at that point, I will work with you, Mr. Begley, to get her on the agenda to have her present to the committee some of the work that's happening through PYDC and this organization. It's a good meeting, about an hour and a half long, but it was very engaging.
Very good. Mrs. Burgess?
I couldn't go there, but four days later, I did go to that regional meeting in Carver.
Yes, you did, at Carver. So you got it, but you went to Carver to get it.
I went, well, I didn't know they were going to talk about that, so I didn't miss anything, but I'm going to just add some things to what you'd said. They said that there was a recovery center coming to Plymouth late February to early March, and it would be up and running late September, early fall. So we'll have that resource available to us. We're, they were talking about a ballot question to opt out of pot shops, yeah, having a pot shop in Plymouth, and putting it on the ballot and giving them time to make adjustments for it. They were talking about Chana, they're getting info out through the pediatric offices. And what they're using a lot of is the students in the marketing classes at our high schools. And so they're doing a program called Sticker Shark, and then they're making posters that are going to be put in the middle schools. And so there's quite, they're creating an action plan for, to send out to liquor stores and trying to get them involved in this. So let's see. The kids are doing their campaign, the marketing campaign, April through June. And the sticker shark thing means that the students are designing the stickers that are going to be put out, well, they're going to be put in the package stores or whatever, yeah. So they're going to be put in there, not at the door maybe, but on products, at different places. So they're still working on it with the marketing students. And the positive thing was 70% of the kids don't drink. So what they're going to do is aim their marketing campaign toward the positivity. So it isn't like everybody's drinking, so you need to drink. Everybody isn't, so that was a good part of it. Peer pressure's the issue. Okay, that's my, so I did get it by going to the other meeting.
All right. And then now we have the building committee.
Yeah, the building committee is, so that was held January 12. And, all right. We went by item, and they're talking about the Russell Street parking deck for the Newtown Hall. It's a separate project, but with the same person. It's $3.4 million. 90% of the documents are in for bid. I guess it's on the 31st of March, we should know who did it. And the Newtown Hall, we're going to have a tour in February, and the Newtown Hall is 65% complete. I think they're about a month and a half behind in the construction. Hopefully, they're going to be making it up. But anyway, if you go by, though, it's really filling in and coming, yeah. The tour will be great to go to now. The Sims House down in Manamet, we're going to have a tour in March and tour that project. But it's in good shape. The contract is on time. Things are coming really along. They plan to wrap it up by the end of May, and they were talking about, in the end, we have to decide who we're going to give the building to, to manage it. So anyway, there's going to be a 30-day advertising period on that. South High School, seems strange, I didn't have the percentage of done, but it's on time, anyway. It's coming along. They're planning on 5:15 to 6:29 to have the delivery of the furniture, and they're also planning to have an online auction for items that are not taken from the old, to the new, what we are not going to use in the district or bring with us. And we're going to be talking about, well, we're going to be talking about that tomorrow night, increasing the funding for the turf and fields, and it's got to go to town meeting, no matter what. And there was nothing on any of the other...
Before we move off to South High School, you've heard several times that the monumental staircase has been a bit of a difficulty. As far as, we talked about it the other night at the building committee meeting, it's in very, very good shape. The back circular staircase is done, and the moldings are in. There's still some finer pieces in the main monumental staircase, but it really is the signature piece. And we were talking the other night at the meeting of the artwork, and I'm sure perhaps we can hear a little bit more about that artwork, because I understand it's pretty magnificent glass artwork that's going to hang down. You want maybe perhaps?
Yeah, sure. I actually have a meeting at 7:30 tomorrow about talking about how they're going to put it together in the stairwell, the monumental stairwell. It's a vision from the kids and the teachers that it, to commemorate, we don't have, North has that beautiful piece of artwork. They have a, you know, a piece of the gym floor. We don't want a piece of the gym floor in our new school, but it's really kind of like a hanging piece, a piece of glass, like Dr. Sorenson said, and there'll be different colors to represent the years of students that went to Plymouth South High School. So the concept is that monumental staircase is all glass on the back, so the light will go through it, and Colleen Quinn explains it much better than I do, but kind of all the successes of the current Plymouth South being brought to the new, but the light kind of shining in on the years of the successes, because it's such a dark structure now, as you all know. So it really is, it sounds great. I'm going to see parts of it, I think, tomorrow for the first time, but Ms. Quinn and Mrs. White, who's actually at Hedge right now, teaching, they're working together. They've been working on it for a while. And those pieces of glass will hang down and kind of be like a prism concept. So it's very different than what North's is, but they're doing a digital replica of different parts of the building, the quotes on the walls, all the artwork that is everywhere in that school. So there'll kind of be that piece to commemorate parts of the building, but that, you know, representation of the years. The 80s will be a color, the 90s, the 2000s, all that.
And it'll be like etched on the glass?
Etched within the glass. They described it, this is very, it's not going to look like this, but almost like a plexiglass frame, and within it will be a kind of shading of a color inside the glass. So I haven't seen it yet, but anything they touch comes out unbelievable, so I'm staying out of it.
I'll never forget when she was doing the North, right? She was the big one with the idea for North. I think it was Quinn, wasn't it?
No.
Who was the other one?
Eric Harkins, I think.
Well, I remember her doing the presentation to us, and I think we were all kind of shaking our head, thinking, what? Right? I mean, doorknobs and door hinges, and we were thinking, uh-oh. And then when we actually saw it, she was trying to describe it, we just couldn't visualize it. And then when it came out beautiful, I mean, it was, she had a vision of what was going to be.
I always say the changing point of the culture of Plymouth South, she, our old lobby was ugly bulletin boards that weren't updated, and she came, and it was, there was just some issues, and she came to me and said, can I put some artwork out? And I said, the kids aren't going to read it. Like, beautiful artwork. And it was, changed everything. Like, that lobby is still, is such a focal point. Like, I remember, yeah, it's, and I remember when it wasn't that, and it was terrible, and it just changed the whole view. So it's neat. I think it's going to be great, so.
Very good.
I'm almost done. So anyway, we're talking about the maritime facility that they're building down at the waterfront, and they've got a VerTech company doing it. The architect is Manchester by the Sea, which is weird where the movie's out. But they're coming to our meeting the night, February 9th is going to be the next meeting, and so they're going to come and present their project as well. Okay. Do you want to know all the things that they've been doing?
Can I have that copy?
You can. See, we get you some. What's going on?
Okay. Mrs. Frye, the appointments, leaves of absence, and resignations?
Yes. We have one certificated appointment, five coach and advisor appointments, and we have no classified appointments at this time, two short-term maternity leaves, and two resignations.
Okay, very good. Now, Ms. Badger, the accounts payable warrant?
Okay. Where school committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost, center, transfer, and transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move that Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant S012617 dated January 26, 2017, in the amount of $1,467,122 and 7 cents as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Dr. Sorenson seconds it. Any further discussion? Then please vote. Unanimous. Next, we have the minutes from December 5, 2016. Dr. Sorenson?
How move we accept the minutes as presented?
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Morgan seconds it. Any further discussion? If not, then please vote on this. Very good. I don't want to jinx it, but it's going fast tonight, right? Yeah, one more. I should have waited till the last one. December 19th minutes.
How move we accept the 19th as presented?
And Mrs. Burgess seconds it. Any further discussion? Then please vote on this last one.
Is that the rain I hear on the roof?
Yes.
I thought it was going to be bad.
Can we go on with this meeting a little longer?
No, you'd have to go on until about 4:00.
That's a sentence I never thought I'd hear.
Dennis, yes, make the meeting longer.
There's a few things we took off the agenda.
Oh, geez.
All right. So just before I let yous all go, first, we have to sign the warrant, but also just to remind everyone, so tomorrow, we'll be at the selectmen's meeting. Everybody doesn't have to come, but there is strength in numbers if you'd like to come, if you're able to come.
What time? Seven?
Seven. I would say seven.
Figure we'll be on 15 minutes into the hour or so.
So you're not, you're not calling a meeting to order tomorrow night?
No, it's not a joint meeting. It's just, we're on the agenda to try to explain to them. And just to, actually, I had it in my head to clarify a point you made. The lights in the field doesn't have to go to town meeting, but it's likely to go to town meeting. So the point of tomorrow is to try to explain to them.
I just repeated what they said at the building committee.
No, so that's why I'm clarifying.
But the turf does, and the lights don't? Is that what you're saying?
No, the lights in the field situation does not have to go to town meeting.
Oh, okay.
However, it will more than likely go to town meeting. So tomorrow night, we're just going to, you know, talk to the selectmen, explain to them what the general law says, and see where it goes.
Okay.
So without objection, then, we're adjourned at 9:15.
We'll be first.
I read that article you sent me, Gary.